All right.
Tell us all the good news that's going on.
Anybody else was coming or not?
Yeah, they're coming.
All right.
Glad, sir, you have the floor.
All right.
Welcome, welcome, everyone.
Thank you. My name is Randy Daigle. I'm fortunate enough to be the chairman of the JFK Building Committee. Good to see everybody. This time, I'm here for another project. It's been 19 years this month that I've been volunteering, doing this for the town. So we have JFK coming today. So what we're going to do, I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves and then we'll start.
Hi, my name is Jill Lexi. I'm with JCJ Architecture and I'm the construction administrator on this project.
Good evening, Marcus Brennan, project executive with Gilbane onsite full-time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sam D'Acquino. I'm an assistant project manager with Construction Solutions Group.
So we're going to start with some good news and continue with good news. So I'm going to allow Sam to go ahead with the budget.
So as you can see here, our total project budget is a little over $84 million. Eligible costs are around $450,000, which means costs that are not reimbursable by the state. That gives us the remainder of eligible costs that will be reimbursed by the state, again, a little over $83 million. Eligible costs are reimbursed at a rate of 70.71%, as you can see here. And then, to date, we've been reimbursed a little over $22 million to put towards the project.
And we also currently have a little over $7 million into the state for reimbursement that we should be getting, the town should be getting within the next several weeks. So it'll be close to $29 million back from the state as of right now. We are a little bit over halfway through the project right now and we are several million dollars under budget and we are ahead of schedule. So one of the things--
Stop right there.
That's right. Thank you very much. We're out of here. So one of the things you're going to hear during the project, when we first put this out the bid, it was pre-pandemic. We were fortunate enough to get the prices locked in. As you all know, the building costs have skyrocketed since then, but we were able to lock the price in and start off the project under budget and we're maintaining it under budget. One of the things we did, the architect, the owner's rep, and Gilbane, when they put out their trade bid packages, we pulled some of them as an alternate. We didn't know at that time where the costs were going to come in, if it was going to be under budget or on budget. Luckily, it came in under budget. So all those items that we took out and had an alternate bid, we were able to put back in. Every single item that we took out as a precaution, we were able to put back into the project. So as we go through these slides, I'm going to interject different times and in some of these areas, I'll bring to notion that we, or bring to mention that we added these back in. They weren't part of the base bid. So with that, we're going to continue. We're going to start the presentation.
So this is a drone photo from just last Friday. It's a mosaic of several pictures the drone takes and you can see the breadth of what we've done on the site so far. The entire building footprint has a new roof at this point, with the exception of the old media center wing. The entire north lot, so upper portion of the photo, has a new parking lot and that was completed over this summer. The fields in the back are roughly graded at this point and over the coming weeks will be hydro-seeded and will be growing grass through the fall season. And then you can kind of see the red lines, if you will, is actually the site fencing that's still up delineating the construction areas that are there. The balance of the site work on that south lot will take place next summer to round out the balance of the site. Next photo. So this is obviously similar to that. The left photo is the site logistics portion. As I mentioned, that north lot is on the left of the page, the green. All that was completed. We're working on the fields in the back now. We have one of the two-story wings currently under construction, the left on the lower, yellow on the lower left. And then the center hub, we have partially under construction right now, the old auditorium area. And then if you look at the right picture, this is the interior phasing of the building. So that gives you a good idea of how the center hub is broken up as far as what is in a condition where the students utilize those pathways to get to the other wings. And the other area we have under construction, kind of on its island, if you will, is the gymnasium, which is that yellow block in the upper left. And that'll be wrapping up in October. We're putting up gym equipment right now and the flooring contractor's coming back next week to sand and seal the floor. So by mid-October, that gymnasium should be ready to go.
One of the things that we did by design was, as you guys are aware, previously, the school, the way it was designed, when they had any function at night, the entire school was open. There was no way to lock down the cafeteria, the auditorium. The auditorium was in the middle of the hub, so all the spokes were open. So after every event, the custodians would have to literally walk around for several hours on every floor and every classroom to make sure nobody's hiding, kids aren't, you know, they play their games and they're hiding or whatever. So one of the things that we did as a committee and with the architect is we allocated the back of the school where the new auditorium, the cafeteria, and the gymnasium's located. We were able to lock that area down from the rest of the school. So if there's any evening functions, we can have, and the parking is accommodating everybody in the back for that also. So if there's something going on in the evening, we could lock down the rest of the school. The custodians don't have to walk around. Once they do their cleaning, they lock their doors and we could hold functions. So as you can see, that big area that's in the green in the back consists of the new D-wing, the auditorium, the gymnasium, and the cafeteria. The gym is in yellow right now. It's going to be turned over pretty soon, so.
So these are some good shots of that area. Obviously, the upper picture is that north lot a couple of weeks ago at this point, as it was getting wrapped up. The lower photo is the outdoor classroom, so a paver area that is part of the pathways as you go out, that it can be utilized as a classroom area as the school wishes.
One of the things you do not see in this photo is the 28-year-old temporary classrooms. This is where they were and this is where the new outdoor classroom area is.
Some more additional outside photos. So the upper picture is obviously the new basketball courts. In the day before this picture, they just got painted and there's still line striping that has to go on. That'll be happening over the next week or so. And then the bottom picture is standing way out in the fields and looking back at the baseball, our future baseball diamond.
So one of the things, as I mentioned early on, that we were able to add back into the project and Public Works is extremely happy about this, is that we were able to put back the irrigation of the fields. All the fields are going to be irrigated now. We, like I said earlier, we pulled them out just to make sure the numbers came in. We needed to build a building first. But now, the building, we have the cost for the building and the extras, the irrigation got put back in.
So standing outside, the new auditorium and the new auditorium entrance, so the building to the right in this picture that has the lighter red siding, it's a cement board siding, and the gray siding that's right below that canopy, that's the auditorium proper. The three double doors there get you into the new lobby area of that auditorium and the gymnasium is on your left in this photo.
One of the things you're going to notice in here is we have these boulders. As far as security, we required to provide, usually you see these big bollards, steel or concrete bollards, in front of the entrance areas to protect cars from crashing in into the areas. So instead of doing that, the architects, JCJ, decided to do them with these boulders, achieve the same purpose and it gives it a better feel, it makes it more comfortable. And the other day, we were, I was over there driving by and there was, had to have been two to three kids just sitting on them, talking away. So it gives it a sitting area and it just, it just gives it a more of a natural look and not so institutionalized with these concrete bollards sticking up.
So this is a shot from a couple of weeks ago inside that auditorium, standing essentially in the top row, looking back at it. You can see all the wood paneling, all the seating, the stage flooring going in during this photo. And we are wrapping up, putting up carpet in that area today and tomorrow, actually. We'll be turning that space over very shortly.
We're going to be able to sit comfortably 600 people.
This is the lobby area right outside the auditorium. So the three doors you see in the distance are the three doors we saw in the earlier photo from the outside.
As you can see on this photo--
I bet I saw that.
Well, there's water on the floor. We had, in the area above the ceiling here, this roof area here, we're moving and repairing, replacing the entire roof system. When we got to this area here, when the crew took the poly-isow, the insulation off, the roof material off the deck-in, the previous roof company that did it saw cut the metal deck-in. So when we pulled the material off, the deck came with it, so there was nothing but steel structure underneath. So we had to order, order steel, had to have it come in. They put the steel down and we were only able to put a temporary roof on it. That was the night when that microburst came through Enfield. A small area of the roof, the corner, got pulled up and the water found its way through. And you can see the ceiling in the back of it is regular acoustical ceiling. That was wood. It got damaged. We pulled it off and Gilbane's crew put ceiling, the acoustical panel ceilings up there until the material comes in. But one of the things I really, I want to emphasize about this is that every project's going to have issues. There's never a successful project without a single issue. But when this happened, it really pulled the team together. Everyone, CSG, JCJ, Gilbane, instead of just sitting there and complaining about this area, he moved the crew to another area. We didn't miss a beat. We did not miss a single day. They moved their crew, they started going in it. And the logistics, everybody took care of the materials, they're on their way. So it was totally a team effort and, like I said, not one day was missed when it could have been several weeks of downtime. So very pleased to have this team.
So this is the corridor between where we just saw the auditorium lobby and it goes into Yellow Wing, which is where the cafeteria and gym are. You could see off to my left, that's where the two new locker rooms are, the boys and girls locker rooms are in that corridor.
Similar area of the building. So this is the old Black Wing. The left photo was looking, standing at the outside doors, looking down the hallway toward the hub. And the right picture is the typical art room as well.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the new flooring that we're using. So both of these photos kind of illustrate it. So this is an LVT flooring, so it's a luxury vinyl tile and it is a very low-maintenance floor. What we had previous to this, and I think what's around Enfield, is a VCT system. And part of that system is that you have to wax it and then strip the wax and re-wax it every year. And I think it took the janitors, how long did it take them to do that?
Two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks to do that process during the summer. And so now, with this new flooring, they no longer have to do that. So it's saving them time and it's also saving them money because they don't have to buy that wax anymore. So we're hoping that this is a good product for the school.
And it's extremely quiet. You walk down the halls and it's like you don't even hear your own footsteps. It's amazing.
Well, it's also, just to piggyback off that, it has more of a matte finish. So you can even see in the corridor, we have all these downlights coming down. You're not getting like that big, bright spot of the light hitting it. It's really kind of dull and just diffused, so it's nicer.
We're still sticking in that Black Wing. This just shows right outside one of the music classrooms. You can see the teachers have already settled in, started putting stuff on the bulletin boards. And in future slides, you'll see furniture that has been moved into all the classrooms as well. So this is a typical art classroom. So prior to students coming, we had all of the furniture installed in all the turnover areas. So there's, I believe, three art classrooms. They all have these typical larger tables with the teaching stations and you can see the teachers already, you know, settled in, moved on all their stuff. And prior to teachers getting there, as well as when teachers were there, we coordinated with school staff, getting all of their contents moved from temporary spaces into new spaces, making sure everyone's stuff was accounted for and they were ready to go for the first day of school.
One of the things that CSG is doing on this project, they're playing a multi, multiple roles on this one. Not only are they the CA, the construction administrator, they oversee the construction, they're also acting as owner's rep. We don't really have a dedicated person yet in town that oversees the construction, a facility manager, per se. So they're actually acting as owner's rep. On top of that, on top of what those two items, which I'm simplifying it, it takes a lot of time and effort, Sam also takes care of the logistics for the move-in. So as she touched upon, before the classrooms were even cleared out, they labeled, they tagged, they inventoried everything that was there. She had a list of where things were getting moved to, had a list of what was coming back, what wasn't coming back. So the logistics, as you can imagine, for many thousand pieces of furniture, and I'm talking about every piece of furniture, was tagged. Phones were tagged, erasers, I mean, it was incredible. So, so CSG, even though, like I said, she kind of just downplayed it and breast-upped it, the logistics was phenomenal and it's still going on because we're, it's a multi-phase project. So I just wanted to bring that up.
So this is still in that Black Wing. This is one of the band rooms in that space. You can see, like I said, all the teachers moved in, they've already stored all their instruments. And Jill, do you want to touch on the ceiling?
Yeah, sure. So as you can see, we have, for the ceiling system, there's sort of an open cranberry grid. And then below it, we have sort of these strange-looking pyramid diffusers. So the reason for this is because we have, you know, music occurring in these classrooms, we wanted to maintain as much volume in that area as we could, which is why we went with the open grid system. And what you can't see above there is all that black that's above. There's actually a spray-applied acoustical treatment on there to also help with the sound. And then these pyramid diffusers that we have kind of throughout in a pattern also help with the sound quality in the space.
Taking you over to the old boys locker room, which is now the kitchen servery. So that area was complete and turned over with this fall and it's up and running. And we continue to work through little glitches as this morning, one of the hot pans wouldn't work and we had our crews running over to get it going and get the service techs out. So it's, all the kitchen ladies are enjoying the new space. This is the old pool, which is your new cafeteria. You can see it obviously in its final form here with all the furniture in place.
This is what we call the extended caf or the spillover cafeteria. It's just made for extra space in case we have, you know, a lot of students in the bigger cafeteria. It's also connected, you can see that door in the back that connects to the cardio room that has all of the treadmills, ellipticals, and all of that equipment that they can use for gym class as well.
Some photos of the hallways just outside that area. So the left photo is essentially standing at the hub, looking toward that wing. So the gym is in the distance on the left and the cafeteria would be in the distance on the right. The photo on the right is as if you walked 100 feet down that hall and the cafeteria is immediately on your right with the gymnasium immediately on your left in that photo. So this is obviously the gymnasium. This is probably about two weeks ago in this photo. At this point, the floor is completely laid and fastened down. The crew is in there now installing the gym equipment, as I mentioned earlier, and will be working to get that gym floor finished over the coming weeks. Locker rooms in that wing of the building as well are brand-new. So you have brand-new gang bathrooms and brand-new locker rooms adjacent to it that are right off the gymnasium. The White Wing is the two-story wing we finished over the summer. So it was the second two-story wing that we had under construction. The left photo is obviously a typical classroom and the right photo is your corridor on the first floor.
I just wanted to mention here, you'll notice that the desks look a little bit different from a traditional student desk. And the reason for this is that it gives the teachers more flexibility in terms of how they can group these desks together. So there's a lot of opportunities for students to work and, you know, pairs or small groups for the teacher to kind of walk around and help everyone. And, I mean, too, even just like this, they still work, so.
And they also raise up height-wise, too. Not only do they move around so that she can, like Jill said, have private teaching areas, but they also raise up because everybody's not the same size.
So this is one of the science classrooms in White Wing. Pretty self-explanatory, as you can see. We have all the science tables and those are actually adjustable as well. You can adjust the height on all of them. And this is another classroom in White Wing. You can see, like Jill mentioned before, the teachers have definitely been utilizing the ability to move the desks around and kind of teach in smaller groups. They've already put up all their posters and things like that and everyone has been very happy since they moved in, so it's been great. And then this is just another classroom in White Wing as well. This is still in the two-story classroom wing. This is just the corridor on the first floor.
As you can see in this photo, one thing that we did in this school is everything is air-conditioned. Every classroom, every room, every office is all air-conditioned. No windows, no window units.
So these photos are of the temporary corridors in the hub. So when we looked at the map before to connect between the wings, we just started construction in the hub when summer started. So what we did over the summer is all the underground work, got the slabs back in place, built several of the permanent walls as well as some temporary walls, so the population can get from wing to wing while we still have the majority of that hub under construction.
One of the things you can notice in this picture is any of the rooms that are inside the hub area, some rooms we were able to put skylights, you'll see in another photo, but some rooms we were not able to. So what the architects did is they put their, some of the walls are glass, they're see-through, they're soundproof and they're tempered glass, so you can't break them. But it allows more natural light in these rooms that are located inside the hub area where they don't have direct access to the outside.
So this is the old auditorium. The slab had been completely removed. Obviously, all the seating and all the old auditorium equipment is gone. We put underground storm and electrical in that area and poured the slab the day before this photo was taken. You can see the sunlight coming through the deck, as Randy mentioned. So skylights have been cut into that area and we're in the process now of building the CME walls in that area for the future tech ed area. Area H, Red Wing, is the last two-story wing that we have under construction. Demo and abatement at this point is complete. We are putting the windows back together as we speak. I expect windows onsite, hopefully by the end of the week, to be starting to go in. The roof is done and we are inside now working on fit-out of that wing, which the next photo we'll show. So you can see overhead MPP rough in this photo had started, the ductwork coming down from the roof and branching into the rooms, overhead electrical conduits, the overhead sprinkler piping is all going on at this point. And with the windows going in, we'll be weathered tight in this wing in roughly a week or so so we can start the sheetrock process in the coming weeks.
So one of the things I wanted to mention before we get into the question period is when we started designing this building, we were running into a problem with what's called swing space. We wanted, we knew we had to keep this building open. We couldn't move the kids off the site. So we were able to utilize the construction pattern by having some wings under construction while some kids are in the other wings. One of the things that the architect and between JCJ and CSG configured was the use of the media center. Unfortunately, at the beginning, the media center is under the 20-year warranty that the state has, which basically says anything under 20 years, you can't get reimbursed on any work being done there. We were like a year and a half shy of it. But through CSG and Gilbane and architects, JCJ, they were able to convince the state that we needed this as swing space, which was a direct relationship to the construction of the project. So they concurred that, okay, we can use it as reimbursement. So the money that we get and we're receiving back, that's 70, almost 71%, we were able to push back into the project. As you all know, the media center is the first thing you see on Rafier Road. So we were able to come up with additional funds within the same project and we're going to redo the entire exterior of that. We're going to re-point it. Although right now, the coping, the granite coping is bleeding through the walls and you can see them, all that's getting repaired. We're going to change the coping so it matches the building. So we, as a committee and as a team, we were really nervous about having a complete, brand-new building and to have this thumb that's sticking out that within the next five years, we're going to have to go to referendum to have repair or fix. So we were able to convince the state to allow us to do it and be reimbursed. So that's going to be all part of it, so the entire building is going to be brand-new when we're done and we walk away. So with that, we'll open it up for questions.
It's a beautiful building and thank you for all your work. Just a simple question. The classroom doors, are they all equipped with locks that lock from the inside or no?
The hardware?
Yeah, the hardware. All the classroom doors are lockable. Yeah, they're all lockable.
From the inside?
Correct.
Okay.
And every door is numbered. So from the outs, every door and exterior window is numbered. So the fire department, the police department will have a map and they'll know when, if, God forbid, somebody calls in, someone in room 218, they can look on a map and know what room that is. Because it may not coincide with the room number, but it will coincide with the window and door, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Casati?
I'm very impressed considering, I've worked in that building for several years and being the former athletic director over there and being an original member of this committee when we first started, the progress is fantastic. I'm really pleased to see everything that I am viewing. And I'm really, really happy to hear that. I'm really happy to hear about the media center, that you have the funds to be able to redo that. Now, is the roof also going to be redone?
The roof is still under warranty--
Roof is still in, the roof is still in good shape?
It's still in good shape. We've had no issues with the roof. But being under warranty, if anything were to fail, we can go back at that. So it's still, it's still in good shape.
Well, that's, that's great. I mean, when I, when I look through and I see the Black Wing and how, you know, you got rid of the pool and I think it's a fantastic idea because when you had mentioned before about chasing students through the building on an athletic event, you know, it kept me in very good shape, I have to say. But I also think at this point in time, the way, you know, our society is right now blocking that building off the way you have it, to have that entrance coming in through the back is fantastic, you know? And I'm highly impressed and, you know, you're further along than what you expected and under budget and so it's, it's really good. Not saying that, you know, COVID helped a little, but, you know, but not having the kids in the building for a period of time. So they really worked hard. Keep up the great work and can't wait till the final project is fully completed.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Counselor Enga?
Counselor Engay?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I really enjoyed it. Did you mention the projected completion date?
I don't believe we did. The intent is to wrap up major construction by the end of next summer, and we'll have trickling work into the fall, but the intent's to be completely done by the end of next summer.
Wow, that's great. Thanks.
Counselor Riley?
I'm so impressed with this. I'm so excited that my kids are going to get to go here next year. I had a question about the outdoor classroom. So, I'm assuming that that's going to be like, have some sort of covering on it out there, or is it just going to be like that open?
Well, I think the intent is to have it not covered. If at some point, we want to purchase something to cover, the town can, but it's just a, it's not a dedicated classroom, it's an extra classroom, so the teachers will have to coordinate who can use it and who wants to use it, when and what. But it's not going to be a covered one.
Okay.
And there's also an outdoor seating in the cafeteria, which we didn't touch upon. So, if it's nice out, the kids can also see, and that also is fenced and secured area. So, we're giving the kids, as you all know, the town knows, a little bit more freedom, a little more responsibility. With the responsibility comes repercussions, which comes learning. So, you know, it's been such a culture shock from coming from J of K to a high school, where we're trying to, everybody's trying to get them a little bit up to speed, so you're not starting from stop, you're slowly getting there, so.
Yeah, definitely. And so, all of the entrances or places of entry have the boulders. I really like the boulders way better than the pillars. So, every safety entrance basically is going to have all the boulders.
Well, there are some doors that have bollards that are under the canopies of the Blue Wing, White Wing, and Red Wing, because it was, it wasn't, it didn't make sense traffic-wise. It would inhibit the traffic sidewalk space. So, there's, there, they consciously use the bollards. But those are no longer entrance areas. Those are exit and entrances only, egress only, not entrance, so. But there was a conscious effort to not put those stones in those areas just for traffic control.
Cool. That's all I had, you guys. It's awesome. I'm so impressed. Thank you.
Anyone else?
For me, the hub is the biggest thing. I mean, you talk about having kids learn a little more responsibility. Again, when the building before all this, the hub was where all the kids were, and it was great to see them just walk around, have their own little conversations in their own little world. And it's so important that that is part of the, and it looks great. Because again, you're right, it teaches them just to, how do you converse with another human being your own age, and it's great. And, you know, and the rocks are great. I mean, I drove back there myself, and what a great idea. I mean, it gives it actually a campus feel to it. And I'm sure maybe that's, I don't know if that was your intention, but certainly came out that way. You know, and then, you know, going, so question, the basketball courts are fantastic. Love the color, great idea, people are already using them. So, even without the three-point line, people are already using them. So, the question is, can the town, at some point, will they be ready for any fall sports or next spring at the earliest, or next fall?
Probably next, I would say next fall.
Next fall, okay.
One of the things, too, I didn't mention, we were able to light the courts. Initially, we weren't going to, it wasn't in the budget to light the courts, and then, when the sun goes down, it was done. But we were able to, and we're in the process of doing that now.
That's great.
It's going to be lit, not only for security, but, you know.
And those courts were one of the, they were being used a lot before all this. They were actually, a lot of the kids played there, so that's great. Yeah, that's great. I mean, and then, I mean, really, the last thing, having the, I know this was sort of at the time, but the irrigation is huge. I mean, I know you sort of touched on it a little bit. That's big, because that was what some of the criticism, if you, you know, like, the fields, it's a great layout, but, you know, sometimes, you know, that water runs right off, and it gets dry out there. So, I mean, I think it's great that we're able, that you were able to build back in, have an irrigation system. Because it really is, and when you go back there, and especially now, when it starts, the leaves start changing, it is spectacular view, and seeing kids play sports out there is great. You know, I mean, it's good for you folks, you'll build that back in. That really is a big deal. I mean, it really, I mean, I know you kind of greased over it, but it's a big deal. You know, especially from just the school, and then when the town uses it as well in other sports. So, I think it's great that you're able to move that back into the project. You know, and really, I think, you know, other than everything that's been gone, you folks have gone on, it is amazing how, when you look at the parking lot, the way it was before, the way it is now, it's amazing. It really is. I mean, that was in tough shape. You know, and then the curbs were all spiked out, and, I mean, you know, you drive back there, and it has a completely different feel. So, completely different feeling, and good for you, for everyone who's been working on this, because it does, it's, I don't want to compare, but it's on par from what you folks accomplished with the high school so far. So, hopefully, as you finish the next year, you'll be on par right there.
Well, you know, again, this was a team effort from day one, from our liaisons. Any point that we had a question, we'd ask them, they'd have the answers for us. We go to town managers, they have, the school department, Andrew, the principal, I mean, everybody's a phone call and immediate answer. This is, you know, the team understands, this is our house. When it's all said and done, they leave, but we're all here. And they talked to the teachers before this was done. They talked to the custodians, they talked to the end-users. They didn't just draw pretty pictures and make it work, or hope it worked. This project is from lessons learned, from years of doing other projects, and we are reaping the benefits from, from cost-wise, to quality-wise, to design-wise.
And the skylights are a great idea, too. Any more natural sunlight. I'll end on one question that, again, I was there when we had the issue. So, how are we in the boilers? There's one asked, you know, I mean, I know we were, we had one at U's back, I know we're going to get brand-new boilers, just curious on if you want to.
Everything's brand-new, and.
It will be turned on very shortly for this one.
And we will not be renting.
Turned down the one that didn't work a few years ago.
No trailers. No trailers. We can take that out of the budget.
All right, good, all right. Anything else from anyone? Anything in closing?
Just again, thank you all for all your support and backing us up all the way.
Great job, everyone. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.